Good evening. Today is Thursday, October 16th. This is our regular Waterbury Board of Ed meeting. We'll start out with a silent prayer. Dr. Schwartz, do you have any remembrances tonight?
Thank you, Board President. In our moment of silence this evening, let us remember former members of the Waterbury Public Schools Education Community who have passed away. Janice Sembuko, retired sixth grade house vice principal at North End Middle School, passed away on September 15th, 2025. Bernard White, former carpenter for the Department of Education, passed away on September 16th, 2025. Rocco Puglizi, retired history teacher at Kennedy and Willby High Schools, passed away on September 29th, 2025. Marian Derwin, retired teacher at Hendrickson, East Farms, and Rotella Schools, passed away on October 2nd, 2025.
Commissioner Jackson, can you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice President Brown. Commissioner Anthony Ireland. Commissioner Latoya Ireland. Commissioner Jackson.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner O'Brien.
Present.
Commissioner Orso.
Here.
Commissioner Serrano Dorno.
Here.
Commissioner Vanstone.
Present.
President Hernandez.
Here.
Secretary Serrano Dorno.
I move to convene into executive session for discussion concerning security strategy, deployment of security personnel, and/or devices affecting public safety.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We are in executive session.
Secretary Serrano Adorno?
I move to return to the regular order of business with the record reflecting there were no votes taken.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Item number five, Commissioner Jackson, may I have a motion? For communications.
I motion to receive and place on file communications as listed.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Commissioner Van Stone, may I have a motion to suspend the regular meeting?
I motion to suspend the regular order of business to hear from the public.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
All speakers are encouraged to submit prepared written statements to the commissioners. Comments shall be limited to a maximum of five minutes. There will be no responses this evening to any questions or concerns raised. They will be referred to the administration for review and response. Thank you.
Our first person is Reverend Ali Gray III.
Good evening, commissioners and superintendent schools. I'm Reverend Ali Gray III, 2929 East Main Street. And I'm here as a grandfather and a concerned citizen of Waterbury. I emailed all the commissioners about a concern I had about a boy playing on a girls volleyball team at Willby High School. Out of all the commissioners, only one commissioner took the time to respond, and that's Commissioner Van Stone. I just want to say thank you. And for the rest of the commissioners, question, did you get my email? I know you can't respond to that, so I'll just let that go there. Since September 2025, Willby High School has unfairly and arguably, in violation of federal and state law, filled in an all-girls volleyball team that includes a boy. This actions discriminates against fair play and the dignity of girls on that team and their privacy in the bathroom and in the locker room. Fair play for opposing teams and honestly is setting this young man on a bad path. The Connecticut Department of Education and the C I A C has not done a good job advising and giving guidance and has not updated what currently reflects federal interpretations of state judicial opinions. In November 2024, there was a case where the C I A C was the defendant against a group of students from Bloomfield, Cromwell, Glastonbury, Canton, and Danbury. In 2019, I was coaching track at Nogaduck High School, and I had girls that had to compete against two males. And the males dominated, and it was a painful experience for those young ladies. And I didn't think it was fair then, and I don't think it's fair now. And I just want to say this, you know, it's ultimately up to the school districts and the schools. I would ask at this time that the Waterbury Board of Education would consider doing the right thing and following Title IX laws and keep the students in sports by their sex and gender. And by the way, the truth of the matter is there are only two genders and two sexes. It's a biological scientific fact. And I want to say this, I have a granddaughter that competes in the M V L. And I don't want her having to compete against boys. It's not fair, and it's not right, and it needs to be addressed. I know that there's some legal issues going on, and I'm hoping that you, you know, that we as the Board of Education are working on this. My number one concern is for our students. You know, I want what's best for them, and I want to do the right thing. So I know you guys have a tough job. I got nothing but love and support for you, pray for you every day. And I pray for this city, and I pray for our young people. I've coached a lot of years here in Waterbury, and I just wanted to voice that. And, you know, the commissioners that, you know, we hire, we elect you to serve. And usually, if I had got a response from everybody, I would just said, forget it, you know, not a big issue. But, you know, if somebody sends you an email, I hope you take the time to respond because you have a, you have a big job. And, you know, you work for us, the constituents of Waterbury. So that's all I had to say. God bless you.
Commissioner Orso, may I have a motion to return to the regular order of business? Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent's announcements, Dr. Schwartz.
Thank you, President Hernandez, Secretary Serrano Adorno, and of course, our Board of Ed Commissioners. I want to start off my superintendent report by belatedly congratulating an administrator on the move, our new assistant superintendent, Anthony Brooks. He was at the 100 Men of Color Black Tie Gala and Awards hosted by June Archer, the Archer Foundation, which recognizes the contributions of men of color in business education, entrepreneurship, government, entertainment service, and the impact they've made on the lives of people throughout Connecticut and Western Massachusetts. Portions of those proceeds from those annual events supports scholarships for young men in college and male leadership and mentorship programs. Our very own assistant superintendent, Anthony Brooks, was among the honorees celebrated at the Bushnell Hartford on September 12th, 2025. And I wanted to publicly congratulate him. Maybe a round of applause. Good news on the Connecticut Ed Rising front, and specifically here at our home in Waterbury Public Schools. We have another student who's a national ambassador for Ed Rising. We're proud to share that Connecticut Ed Rising, we've reached that milestone. That Rocco Zenick from Waterbury Career Academy has now been selected to represent Ed Rising at the national level. He joins Haley Johnson, the National Vice President of Engagement, making this the second time a Career Academy student has earned this National Officer position. And we are very proud of the outstanding achievement for both Rocco, for Rocco, our city, and our state. And of course, this milestone wouldn't be possible without the unwavering support and mentorship of one of our very own W C A teacher leaders, Erica Buto, who continues to inspire and guide the next generation of our teachers. Thank you, and congratulations, Rocco. Last week, we had an amazing professional learning opportunity for teachers. And this is just one example of math teacher professional learning. You could see teachers up and moving, the old days of sit and get and just listen for the next seven hours as we try the best we can with our amazing cabinet and leadership team to try to create professional learning opportunities that get teachers moving and engaged. And you can see here where math teachers are learning about thinking, building thinking classrooms. Congratulations to the Human Capital Office and all of the supervisors who were able to put that amazing professional learning opportunity together for our teachers last week. We also had a school opportunity fair on October 14th at West Side Middle School. It was packed, and I was so glad to see so many of our Waterbury Public School tables being visited by the public. Many students in the lower grades, middle grades, and upper grades trying to figure out. Many eighth graders trying to figure out what their best options are for ninth grade or ninth grade. Many fifth graders trying to figure out what's good for sixth grade. And some younger families trying to figure out preschool and kindergarten options. And so congratulations to Niree and Dr. Boatwright and for all the schools that were represented at that fair. Although Hispanic Heritage Month technically ended on October 15th, we had a few events. There was one just before the board meeting at Washington School. And this is just three pictures of some of the most amazing events that I saw across the district over the last month. I just want to thank the administrators and all the teachers, apparently liaison, staff members, and all the schools for putting together Hispanic Heritage Month to celebrate our amazing students and their heritage. I also had the pleasure of going with President yesterday. We saw Hopeville School, they had amazing dances from students from really many different Hispanic communities and even saw some teachers getting to the fun. So that was, that was fun. We were a little tempted to get up there ourselves and dance, but we didn't want to start any rumors. And then, she's not listening, so I can say that. So we almost got up there and danced yesterday at Hopeville. But yes, 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 yeah.
But the kids would have outdid me.
The kids, the kids were good. I'm telling you, the kids were great. So congratulations to all the schools putting on amazing events. And then just a reminder, number one, happy Bosses Day for all the Board of Education. Thank you for all that you do for me as the superintendent and for the city of Waterbury. And just a reminder to the general public to follow us on social media.
I'm sorry, Dr. Schwartz, I was trying to figure out if the young lady out there was our student rep.
It's all, it's all good. It's all good. We did have a fun time at the event, though.
We did have a fun time at the event. So I'm going to keep my comments short. I'm just requesting that one of our commissioners that is going to be on the board will take over being the representative for ACES because the representative that is currently in that role would like to give up that seat. So think about it, and please let me know soon so that we have a representative for ACES. As Dr. Schwartz had mentioned, I went out to Hopeville, and it was very exciting. And I told the children, it takes a lot of courage to get up and dance in front of your classmates and the whole school. And they did an excellent job, and the kids were actually very respectful and supportive of the kids that were dancing. So it was a great event. And that's all for my president comments. I'm going to move to number 10 because we don't have a student representative here. The consent calendar, does anybody wish to remove an item from the consent calendar? 10.1, Committee of the Whole, request approval of the memorandum of understanding with Milestone C L L C for a professional learning partnership. 10.2, Committee on the Whole, request approval of the Board of Education's 2026 meeting schedule. 10.3, Committee on Finance, request approval of the service agreement with Vista Higher Learning LLC for a world language learning platform. 10.4, Committee on Finance, request approval of Amendment 1 to the Professional Service Agreement with Comer Consulting LLC for onset tier-one instructional support. 10.5, Committee on Finance, request approval of Amendment 1 to the Professional Service Agreement with A PAX Educational Solutions LLC for board-certified behavioral analyst services. 10.6, Committee on Building and School Facilities, request approval to accept the Window Cross Pre-K to 8 grade school construction project 151-295-EARR as complete. 10.7, Committee on Building and School Facilities, use of school facilities by Use of school facilities by school organizations and/or city departments. Commissioner O'Brien, may I have a motion?
I motion to approve the consent calendar, items 10.1 through 10.7.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12, Committee of the Whole, Secretary Serrano O'Dornal.
Thank you, Madam President. Ladies and gentlemen, I move that the Waterbury Board of Education approve the proposal of the Waterbury Development Corporation to divide property currently occupied by Rotella Inter-District Magnet School into two parcels. The larger parcel to continue to be used by Rotella Inter-District Magnet School, and the smaller parcel to be used by the Fire Department for the construction of a fire station, subject to approval by the Board of Aldermen.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Oh, I'm sorry. Rocco?
I have to say, I'm 100% in favor of this project, but this is a magnet school, and I think it'd be a disservice to the Fire Department, the city, WTC, and the Board of Education if we didn't do our due diligence and find out if there's an obstacle to use that land for the Fire Department. So, and like I say, I'm 100% for, but I'd like to find out this information before we, before there's a formal vote on it.
Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Van Stone?
Madam President, through you. With some agreement to what Commissioner Orso said, I would like to make a motion at this time to table this item.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We will table this item. Committee on Finance, Commissioner Orso.
Item 13.1. Ladies and gentlemen, I move that the Waterbury Board of Education approve of the 2025-2027 Consolidated Two-Year Federal Grant Application.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 13.2. Ladies and gentlemen, I move that the Waterbury Board of Education approve a services agreement with Math Concepts Incorporated for math teaching training.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 13.3. Ladies and gentlemen, I move that the Waterbury Board of Education approve a construction contract, RFP 8557, with Advanced Security Technologies Incorporated for alarm intrusion services for a five-year period.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Sorry, was there any discussion on that? 13.4.
13.4, ladies and gentlemen, I move that the Waterbury Board of Education approve a professional services agreement with Nurses for Daycare LLC for individualized nursing services for students with complex medical needs.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Johns? And Ashlyn?
Good evening, President Hernandez, Secretary Serrano O'Dornal, Superintendent Schwartz, and esteemed commissioners of education. We are presenting this evening in addition to your agenda, and we apologize for the late arrival of these additional items. Items 13.4 through 13.6, I'd just like to speak about as a whole, for the sake of time. We secured a contract with Equinox Healthcare, Home Care, excuse me, services for one-to-one nursing services in the schools several months back. We intended to secure several contracts at once at that time so that one-to-one nursing services could be assured we would always have a supply of nurses, but at the time, we only found one vendor that was appropriate for the contract. We put out a subsequent RFP and secured three additional contracts, which are the resulting items that are before you. This provides for one-to-one nursing care consistent with the outcomes expected from the Board of Education Superintendent's, excuse me, Special Education Department under the purview of Ms. Johns. So, we're working collaboratively to oversee the nursing care that's delivered to these students who have special healthcare needs.
Any questions? Commissioner O'Brien?
We're specifically talking about those students that are, whether they're in school, that need extra medical care.
These are students who are in school, who will be accompanied from their home to school, cared for at school, and then returned home accompanied by the nurse. There are some situations where it's a student who only requires the service or the accompaniment of a nurse in transit to school, in which case the service would just be provided for, for the time that they're on the bus.
And these students, when do they each have an IEP that specifies?
Yes.
Are there any other questions? How many students, Ms. Johns, do we currently have that are in need of a nurse?
Sure. Currently, we have 14 students that receive the assistance from an LPN and two students that have RN care. And that's as per their IEP.
Any other questions? Thank you. And that takes care of 13.5. Request approval of a professional service agreement with Nurses. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So, that takes care of request approval of a professional service agreement with the Nurses Nurse Network LLC. Request approval of a professional service agreement with AAA Nursing Care. Commissioner Orso?
Yes.
I'm being told that you should read these. Thank you.
We have to go down individually, I'm assuming.
Yes, please.
Okay. 13.4. I move that the Waterbury Board of Education approve a professional service agreement with Nurses for Daycare LLC for individualized nursing services for students with complex medical needs.
Second.
Can I get a second?
She did.
Oh, sorry. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 13.5. I move that the Waterbury Board of Education approve a professional services agreement with the Nurse Network LLC for individualized nursing services for students with complex medical needs.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 13.6. I move that the Waterbury Board of Education approve a professional services agreement with AAA Nursing Care LLC for individualized nursing services for students with complex medical needs.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 14. Committee on Building and School Facilities, Commissioner Jackson.
I move that the Waterbury Board of Education approve the use of school facilities and/or waiver requests of various groups and organizations as listed, subject to fees and insurance as required.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 15, Superintendent's notification to the board. Commissioners Serrano O'Dornal, may I have a motion?
Motion to receive and place on file the superintendent's notification to the board, items 15.1 through 15.6.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Did someone second that?
Second.
Is there discussion on that?
Have a good night.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. I just.